I think for sure they're there, Tim. I've seen the court earlier today. Speaking of court, they finally settled my motorcycle accident. Almost three years. Yeah, I'm not going to go over to any meeting, but I'm going to get this out. Do you have any more copies of this?
Uh, I can make copies.
Well, you don't have to make them, because I'm going to give them to the box.
Okay.
Alright, cool. Thank you. Enjoying retirement?
Oh, yeah.
That's a dumb question.
Yes, I am.
Just pre-year, you deserve it.
Yeah.
Would there be anything on my kids?
I take them to preschool every day.
I had my kid come in and visit. He stayed over for his grandparents, and I said, "How's he doing?" And he said, "Let me go pull him off the ceiling, and I'll tell you." He was white versus... He... There you go.
I got one on the way.
I have. I already have two.
Huh?
I already have two. And one of them is... I mean, that's... Just every day, I feel like I was keeping them.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'd like to call this evening City of Uniontown regular city council meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Roll call?
Mr. Billy?
Here.
Mr. Vesalki?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Here.
Mr. Shuhon?
Here.
Mayor Gerke?
Here.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
An executive session was held on February 20th, 2023, at 4:30 for personnel matters and on March 2nd for legal matters. Are there any comments on agenda items only? Yes, sir.
I saw Becca commenting first on items 51 and 52 for the promotions to corporal from two of our officers in our department to ascend to the corporal position. Just so everyone's aware, it counts as where this... These positions have been in our budget and have not been filled for the last year. I've taken that year to conduct an evaluation process before running it, so I had a true evaluation on the officers that would be taking the test. Council had approved the promotions process for us to run testing. That testing has been completed. And at 51, you'll see Patrolman Jerrel Hanley to be promoted to corporal. He was seated in the eligibility process of this list as number one overall. He's been with our department for approximately five years at this point. A little backstory to Jay, I take some pride in being able to say this. Jay trained me how to be a police officer in Pennsylvania. He was my sergeant when I was a part-time cop in Green County. And then at number 52, you have Nicholas Zacco. Nick is a Marine Corps veteran, has been with our department for eight years. Tested eligibility number two overall in the test. I have full faith that these guys will be able to complete the task of being a supervisor in our department. They've been unofficial leaders without titles in our department for the duration of their time with our department. And I look forward to them leading our department beyond the point of me even being here. So for that, I'd ask for your vote for approval. And then finally, at number 49, the long-awaited grant that we've been going for, we've been finally approved for a total of $174,910. That is for technology upgrades in our department. One of the things that most of our guys, if not all of them at this point, have been wanting for at least three to four years has been body cams. This will buy body cams, this will buy in-car cameras, computers, and computers in the station. Long needed, I believe. I believe this is going to change the dynamics in which policing is done in our city and will help us solve a lot more crimes and have video evidence of the crimes so we're not disputing them in court. But a lot of hard work put into getting that grant, especially from the guys on the road that pounded the ground to give us the statistics to make this award on this grant that much easier to do. And we're going to be going for more in the long run. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments on agenda items only? If not, that's all I have.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to receive the report of the treasure for the month of February 2023. Be and the same is hereby received and filed. Mr. Vesalki?
Yes, I received it.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes, it's voted and received.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the minutes of the February 2nd, 2023 regular council meeting. Be and the same is hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the City of Uniontown for February 2023 invoices. The general fund, $97,563.37. Sewer fund, $135,350.10. Recreation, $1,017.93. Highway, $15,785.65. Off-street, $2,032.52. Recycling, $1,982.83. Library, $11,191.42. Community development, $77.69. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to appoint Jared Bolick to the Uniontown Downtown Business District Authority Board, term to expire December 31, 2025. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to ratify the reappointment of Gregory Crossley and Doug Miller to the City of Uniontown Civil Service Board, terms as follows. Gregory Crossley term January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2026. Doug Miller term January 1, 2021 to December 31, 2024. Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the Uniontown area high school baseball boosters to purchase and install batting cages at Bailey Park where the old concession stand used to stand and to authorize City of Uniontown employees to jackhammer and remove concrete slab debris from said area. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Councilman Vesalki, I'd like to thank you for spearheading that in the park for Councilman Shuhon and the city. I'm voting yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
You're welcome. I take some pride in the fact that my guys did that. It's not some, you know, big construction feat, but anything that they do to help with the city and with the parks, I just, I'm really proud of them guys. They've really stepped up, so thank you.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into an agreement with the City of Uniontown and the Uniontown Sons of Italy Giuseppe Mazini Lodge 231 for the purpose of the Uniontown Sons of Italy to host an event, the Italian Festival, in the City of Uniontown on Saturday, August 12, 2023, from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Saturday, August 13, 2023, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM for a one-time payment to the City of Uniontown of $5,000. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the Teamsters Local Union 491 Collective Bargaining Agreement for a three-year period, beginning January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2025. Salary increase for year one of 2.5% will be paid retroactive to January 1, 2023. Mr. Billy?
Just, I just wanted to make a note for the council on this one. So this is approving a contract to be then addressed and considered by the union. Hopefully, they would also then be approving that there is a substantial savings for the city from what is currently budgeted, both for healthcare and for wages for the police in 2023 for this year. So just so council's aware of the specifics of that proposal.
Thank you.
Now, I would like to also extend to the Teamsters, thank you for negotiating and good faith.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize acceptance of the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Grant in the amount of $174,910 for technology upgrades. Mr. Vesalki?
Chief, I agree this is going to be a game changer, and I'm glad you guys are getting this equipment, so yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Uniontown City Police Department and the Federal Bureau of Investigation to provide access to databases not currently available to the Uniontown Police Department. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes, this will be a great asset to our police department.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to promote Patrolman Jerrel Hanley to the rank of corporal effective March 6, 2023, with a 12-month probationary period at a salary of $30.58 per hour. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
With pride, yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to promote Patrolman Nicholas Zacco to the rank of corporal effective March 6, 2023, with a 12-month probationary period at a salary of $30.58 per hour. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
Again, with pride, yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
And Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Nice to meet you. Thank you guys all for supporting this.
Appreciate it that you do, thank you.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown that Patrolman Seth Hagerty is hereby appointed a full-time police officer after successfully completing a six-month probationary period for the City of Uniontown effective March 3, 2023. Mr. Vesalki?
Yet again with pride, yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the quote of LB Water Service, Inc. for the purchase of sewer pipes in the amount of $5,708.
Just real quick, I just want to say that this is pretty much keeps supply on hand. These are the things we need, and we haven't really replenished much supply lately, and we've been going through a lot of it with all the new utility coming through the roads, and just, we just need to have it, just replenish them back on stock, so that's what this is for.
And if I could add to your statement that this expenditure comes out of our sewer fund, so it's no money coming out of our general.
Thanks.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire Brianna Knox for the part-time sewage clerk position in conjunction with her current part-time clerk position in the Department of Accounts and Finance, creating a full-time position for a six-month probationary period beginning March 6, 2023, with health benefits beginning after 60 days. Salary for said position is her current salary of $1,357 per hour. Hours worked, wages, and benefits for position will be split evenly between the general fund and the sewer fund. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes, Bree does an excellent job in our office, and she is definitely worthy of this full-time position. We can now offer her, yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
There couldn't be a better fit. This is fantastic, and we're all excited sewage office as well, so yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize 2023 annual testing and service of fire pumps and apparatus components of fire engines number two and three by Fast of the Allegheny Mountains at a cost of $870 per fire engine. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize 2023 annual testing and service of fire pumps and apparatus components of fire engines one and four by Fast of the Allegheny Mountains at a cost of $660 per fire engine. Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize 2023 annual testing and service of fire pumps and apparatus components of ladder truck number one by Fast of the Allegheny Mountains at a cost of $920. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize 2023 annual decreasing and relubrication of the aerial device and its associated components on ladder truck number one by Fast of the Allegheny Mountains at a cost of $2,500. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize 2023 testing, air sampling, and maintenance of the fire department's breathing air compressor at a cost of $1,200. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the City of Uniontown hosting a farmers' producers' market on Saturday mornings at the Bailey Park parking lot adjacent to Pennsylvania Avenue from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM from Memorial Day to Labor Day, waiving the vendor fee for the first year. Mr. Vesalki?
There's a lot of folks that couldn't make it before with the timing, and I'm excited about this. I think it's going to be great. My wife's been wanting to go, just can't because of her work schedule, so this, I'm, yes, this is great.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the City of Uniontown and the University of Pittsburgh students to begin working on the city's website and social media platforms. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
So a few of us from council, a few weeks ago, had the, uh, an opportunity to meet these young folks with the university, and the bright ideas, the young ideas that they're bringing to the table. And, you know, I'm excited after the meeting that we have with them. And I'd just like to say thanks, you know, bringing that young enthusiasm into the city. Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
We're actually, I want to mirror who's exactly what you said, but we're very lucky and fortunate to have this. They did such a fantastic job, and other studies and reports they did. So absolutely, yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize in-kind services be performed by Lee's Plumbing to install and erect the scoreboard at the Bailey Park Baseball Field in exchange for five years advertising on the scoreboard.
Make a motion to table this resolution.
I'll second that.
This is on the motion to table made by Mr. Billy, seconded by Mr. Vesalki. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize Consultant Mark John to solicit paid advertisement for the fence at Bailey Park Baseball Field. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
If you'll notice, every baseball field has them lined all around. This is a perfect opportunity for businesses to get their names out there and to get some revenue for the city, so yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
And just to add to that is to mirror the comment by Councilman Vesalki, is that all these funds that are generated from the advertising will then go back into the board. So I think that's very important to scout right there.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the City of Uniontown to submit a request for a one-year extension of their Comprehensive Blight Plan Program Grant to the PA Department of Community and Economic Development. Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation is the agency charged with granting permits to allow the placement of signs or banners within state rights of way. City Missions has applied for a overhead banner for their 5K raise. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize PA state vehicle inspection along with truck preventative maintenance and service for engine number three at a price of $700. This would be the fire department. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
I just want to make sure, because if one agenda says that the engine four resolution is engine three.
He kind of changed last separate from the others, so let me... How much is it? Is that $100?
Yeah, $700.
This was, this is for an inspection, vehicle inspection. The other one was for a, the annual testing and service.
Yes, we have, we have a conflict in the agenda and the resolution. I make a motion to table this resolution. We can bring back, this is something I think that...
It is, it is engine number three.
It is engine number three, okay. Disregard, disregard that motion. Number three. Disregard that motion.
I would to Mr. Billy's though.
Yes. Sorry about that.
Mr. Vesalki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the Greater Uniontown Joint Sewage Authority to make payment on behalf of the City of Uniontown from the city's 2021 refund in the amount of $52,624 to be applied to the city's share of the Kerr Street project.
No, I just want to talk real quick on this one. You've heard us talk about this Kerr Street project for a very long time. It's finally come into fruition. We're under DEP program where we have to get some of these jobs done. We're trying to figure out a way to come up with a lot of the money. There's, we're going to be us, North Union and South Union, and we're all going to be working on it together. And then, if you would, Councilman Billy, can you explain just the way that this refund is going to be applied?
So, you know, just to briefly go through it, we had a project, and we found out about this at the beginning of last, of last year, beginning of my term. And this project, so what was happening is, is that we were getting inundated with, with, you know, rainwater. And so what the, what the authority had done was tested each interceptor where this could be. So the amount of time that it had taken for the plant to receive this influx of water made it best to tackle this Kerr Street project first. And this right here is a perfect example of municipality cooperating and working together. So we share with North and South Union in the greater Uniontown area sewage authority. And this, so what happened is, is that the project had cost a certain amount of money, and this was going to be split between the city and paid through the refund. So there was a change order that came in, had come in for $14,300. So what that now... So, what that now does is that kicks that in to our future refunds. So, and this is another project that you can look at that we did not have to take out any Pennfest loans for. This was all done, now, this is, it, it is being taken out of next year's refund, but this is a perfect, yes, perfect project. This shows that the city can work with its neighbors, uh, for a greater Uniontown, uh, which is something that I believe is in the near future. So, uh, just to kinda break it down, um, the initial bid was 150, $151,370. The change order was for $14,300, gave us a total, uh, total project cost of $165,670. The payment number one, which was given by the authority, uh, which was, uh, 149,610, uh, we have made that up through the, the refunds, uh, and that's what you see, and that's what you've heard, is the $52,624 was Uniontown's share of that cost, which will be taken out of next year's refund. So, it didn't cost the city, uh, essentially anything except for the refund that we were gonna get next year. And, um, we have more in the future works for this as well, because what's gonna happen is, is right now, this project was completed. The Sewage Authority is dropping flow meters in, we're gonna retest again, so when we get the influx of water coming in, we're gonna be able to show this, because the city is under a, um...
D E.P. advisory?
An advisory by the D E.P. So, we're gonna be able to use this. North Union is also gonna be able to use this information on our reports back to the D C.D. So, um, I'd like to thank, uh, the supervisors, uh, with North Union, also the supervisors with the township of South Union. We weren't a part of, on this, but we were all together at the table for discussion. Um, it's great to see when you get elected officials together, and we're all moving in the same direction for, for the good of, of, uh, you know, our residents.
And then, real quick, can you just touch on what the refund, what the refund, what you mean by a refund, where that comes from?
So, what, so we pay, uh, you know, we collect, and then we, you know, turn over, uh, and then in between, uh, you know, the authority will kick refunds back. Every single year, this is something that happens, so.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it.
Is there anything else that you wanted to add to that meeting? I know we were, we weren't there at the meeting, but it was, it was over a year ago.
It was amazing to see, uh, a lot of times, there, if we don't get that cooperation, a lot of people, times, we don't get, some municipalities and townships will just, I don't wanna do it, I don't, you know, work together, but I tell you, this was amazing. Everybody wanted, more's worked for the same goal, just like you said, and we all walked out of there with our head held high, that we all can, we worked together and made it perfect. I mean, you can't ask for a better situation than this, that we're gonna get this resolved and move forward with the, having no cost to the city, and it, this is just one small part, it's like you said, that this is gonna start getting our plant up to speed and making our sewage system better slowly and surely.
I think it's a really good, uh, beginning of a, of a great working relationship between the township supervisors of North and South and the city of Uniontown. And, you know, we're quickly gonna be moving into, you know, right now, we're, we're getting ready, um, Councilman Basaki's crew is getting ready to start on the Sheepskin Trail, the portion, phase two, the portion right behind, uh, Auto Land, and this will carry through on the Beeson, and then we'll carry into the, the, the border of North Union right there, which is going to be another place where the city of Uniontown is gonna come together, and we're gonna, we're gonna help out our neighbors to, uh, to the north of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Um, public reports, Uniontown Fire Department, Pastor Winfrey?
Okay, uh, the Uniontown Fire responded on the following incidents for the month of February. Uh, six fire-related incidents, which included two cooking fires, uh, contained to the stove up top, two trash fires, and one scorched burns, but no active fire in a building on, out on the rubble. One out, one fire out on the rubble with smoke, uh, be moved and needed. Fifteen rescue-related incidents, all being, uh, motor vehicle collisions. Seven hazardous condition incidents, including three natural gas leaks, one being a very major incident, three electrical emergencies, and one carbon monoxide emergency. Twelve service-related incidents, including two persons in distress, two, uh, waterline breaks, seven lockouts or, or gain access, uh, one assist, uh, the police or, uh, other governmental agency incident, two hazardous material incidents, sixteen fire alarm activations, including one sprinkler system malfunction, three witness, uh, fire drill in a, in a public facility, which included faculty, staff, training, uh, pre-incident planning, and building familiarizations, four public fire prevention education programs, training conducted or taken for the month. The department had a total of 244 man-hours of training for the month of February. The fire department is conducting a basic, uh, skills refresher training, uh, series every Sunday afternoon on top of all the other training, uh, taking place. Personnel also recently, uh, participated in first aid, CPR, or recertification, and hazard materials operations, and annual refresher training, apparatus updates. Engine number three is due for, uh, P.A. state vehicle inspection and preventive maintenance on the truck components by the end of March. I realize I submitted a lot of proposals for resolution regarding apparatus testing and maintenance. These will not be all at once, and will likely be progressively, uh, scheduled and done as our vendors and testing companies have openings. I wanted to get your approval as well in advance, so I can get the ball rolling on these. The apparatus testing I requested is an annual requirement as per our industry standards, namely the National Fire Protection Association and Insurance Services Office, along with the, uh, Compressed Air Association regards to the breathing, uh, air. But foremost, above the, the standards, I want to ensure our equipment works when needed to serve our citizens and to keep my men and women safe. I would not only, uh, I do not want any to suffer a line of, uh, duty death in our department due to, uh, faulty equipment or the unnecessary death of a citizen. The testing and maintenance requested will cover the fire pumps, generators, pre-lubrication of the aero device in our ladder truck. Towards, uh, fall, we will also need to approve to have our aero device and ground ladders tested, which will include weight testing as well as non-destructive tests such as, uh, x-raying the aero device. I will request a resolution for approval of these once we draw closer. Ladder truck number one will also be due for a P.A. state inspection in May. However, we likely will need rear tires for it. I have a request for pricing out, and we'll present it for approval once it is received. Miscellaneous, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Dora Smith, who was instrumental in our department's ladies auxiliary, as well as in the Western P.A. and Pennsylvania State Firemen's Association auxiliary. Mrs. Smith recently passed at 96 years of age. She was married to, uh, Edward Smith, a former chief of the department. She was given full honors at her funeral. Uh, may her contributions always be remembered. Personnel still continue to be involved in community events, along with outreach programs, public fire education, and pre-incident planning as well. Lastly, don't forget what Thursday night is. Bingo is, uh, is at the Social Hall and, on Dumbo Street, it starts at 6:45 with the doors opening at 5:00 p.m. We appreciate all of the community's support. Respectfully submitted by Scott A. Conch.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Councilman.
Um, Police Department Chief DeWitt?
Good evening again, thank you. Thanks for approving those as well. Um, so during the month of February, the Uniontown Police Department responded to 679 calls for service. A breakdown of some of those calls included 24 vehicle accidents, 15 assaults, 20 welfare checks, 21 domestic violence calls, two assist fire calls, 15 disorderly conduct, 17 emergency medical assists, 11 assist other police departments, three harassments, again, a great number here, two shots fired calls, 30 alarms, 53 suspicious persons, activities, or vehicles, 12 thefts, four burglaries, nine animal complaints, and one overdose where an officer issued, administered Narcan, sorry. Officers made a total of 32 criminal arrests, issued 13 non-traffic citations and 48 traffic citations. We also conducted vehicle foot patrols of the Sheepskin Trail, and we've been doing walkthroughs now of the Uniontown High School and, uh, middle school and elementary schools throughout the city, Lafayette and B.F., same. Uh, just random walkthroughs, just to get an officer presence, and it gives our officers the ability to have a layout in the unfortunate event that something happens in the school, we have an immediate response and know the layout of that facility. Um, we've been in direct communication with the school and the school police to make this happen, to kind of, kinda help us pre-plan a little bit, and build a relationship with students. Um, and Scott, and Chief Conch reports he, uh, mentioned that we did, that they did CPR first aid. We actually did that in conjunction with them. Um, that was a CPR first aid, first responder, and stop the bleed course. Um, that was put on by Fayette MS. I can't thank them enough for coming to help, uh, train us, all members of the department, even volunteers that were, that, that came to that from the fire department as well. Uh, in the code enforcement for the month of February, uh, code enforcement closed February, they closed 12 cases in February, opened 23 new cases, and are carrying 11 cases over from January. Last week, this is, this is the benefit of a police officer running code. So, last week, Officer Camper was, uh, conducting a check on a, of a basement on a property inspection off of Beeson. This resident had recently been placed on the police department's radar for narcotics trafficking. Officer Camper attempt, uh, had went into the basement to conduct the inspection, and upon him being in the basement, located a male who was hiding. Um, the male attempted to flee from Officer Camper after he jumped out of hiding. He was subsequently taken into custody after a scuffle. Officer Camper had injured his shoulder, and now he's still working, though. Um, the male was taken into custody on outstanding warrants, and he also was arrested, uh, for possession with intent to deliver crack cocaine. He had 26.6 grams of crack cocaine in his pocket, which is just shy of an ounce. That's a boatload of coke. Um, this is an added benefit to us doing code enforcement in the P.D., um, but we're, you can see that we're getting a lot more response with code enforcement with a uniformed officer than I think we were before. We're, we're not seeing the sweep citations, because we're actually getting cases to resolve ourselves, but just a little officer presence, I think, I think's helping a little bit. Um, finally, parking enforcement. I know it is unpopular, uh, for some, but the Wild West and the city of Uniontown's gonna end when it comes to parking. Um, so parking enforcement is officially started in the city of Uniontown. Uh, Mr. Dylan Bonna was who council had approved for, to do parking. Uh, he's been walking over the city for the last few weeks, learning the streets and the parking zones in the downtown business district, as well as meeting business owners, managers, and employees of those businesses. I think, um, we can all clearly say that downtown parking is one of the big problems. I mean, we need to be able to, uh, get our businesses in a good light, number one, but number two, we need to have customers that can come to those businesses. And if the parking's being taken up, there's no way customers can get to those businesses. So, we're trying to establish a relationship with him with the businesses to make this a little bit easier in the process. Dylan has been applying warnings to vehicles and citations for vehicles currently who are violating handicap parking in areas which are currently painted for no parking along Main Street. So, he's been issuing citations to those, but other zones he's issuing warnings for. That will change on Mar, the week of March 20th. March 20th, parking will be enforced in its full capacity, meaning two-hour parking zones will be enforced, you will be receiving tickets for that if you violate it. He is, he's learning, it's a process, um, and I'm sure it's gonna generate a lot of complaints, council members are gonna get complaints over this. I'm sorry that's gonna happen to you, 'cause I know, I'm gonna get calls, Kim got a bunch of calls that day we went out, and I was walking with him for three hours. Um, I got a bunch of calls, it's unfortunate, but we do have to set us, in, in Mike Tomlin's words, "The standard's a standard, and we're gonna hold it." Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Um, Director of Public Works, any report, Steve?
Um, now, John's not able to make it tonight. We went over, thanks to Councilman Billy for helping with that, uh, with the Kerr Street project. Um, he's also mentioned the tracks. This is, uh, a lot of people think that this is just a trail. It's, the Sheepskin Trail's not just a trail. It's gonna bring a lot of people through the city to visit, to, you know, spend money in our stores and our restaurants. Um, it's kind of, it's exciting to see, and I'm really proud to have my guys be a part of it. They're gonna start pulling those tracks, like you said, and we're just gonna continue on, and, uh, it, it's gonna be a vast improvement for the city. Um, you know, a lot of folks have said, you know, there's nothing going on in the city, no, nothing's being done. Bailey Park is a huge example, it's absolutely beautiful, I, you know, and seeing that trail and knowing I'm a part of it, and we're all a part of it, is amazing. So, there are, there are some things happening that are positive. We just have to, you know, see those and, and express and show that those are happening, not just focus on the negatives. So, I just wanted to tell everybody, thank you for, for all of this, and I'm proud of my guys for doing it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Um, time for public comment. Um, any public comment this evening? If not, that's all I have. Oh, I'm sorry. Could you take the, uh, the podium and state your name and your address, please?
Hi, Ashley Howes from the Fayette County Drug and Alcohol Commission. We are hosting our third annual Freshnet Fayette, so you were just talking about Bailey Park, and that's who we want as one of our parks. We'll have a park in every school district, um, really trying to get the kids to clean up a park instead of doing who knows what. Um, so our event is on Earth Day, April 22nd, it's from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m., and we'll handle everything, student releases, um, press, yeah, press releases, photo releases, we just need approval, so, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do I ask you things before?
Me too.
Okay, you wanna go?
Yeah. Uh, last week, I attended the, uh, infrastructure meeting that the commissioners had at the Galton Bank Building. Uh, it's the Fayette County Infrastructure Bank. Uh, what this is, is, uh, it'll show us, and I'll get with the mayor and council, um, any projects that we might have, we might be able to get funded, or through, uh, some of the grants are matching, some aren't, some are, uh, completely funded. It all depends on the project and how it deals with our, uh, our main, uh, um, plan for, uh, for the city. So, I just wanted to thank the three commissioners, Lor, uh, the CDs, and Dunn, and also Michael Musser was there too from Harrisburg, so I wanted to thank you too for being there. But I have all the information here on what we can do to get some additional funding for the city through, um, again, it has to be an infrastructure project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
I, I would just like to thank Mr. Crosley. Mr. Crosley does a lot for us, he's our emergency manager, uh, emergency management coordinator. Uh, great, just like to thank you, uh, recently just received an email, an updated emergency management, uh, handbook, thank you. Uh, also, uh, received the email, um, and this is just a, 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 basically a public service announcement. Uh, this is from the, this is from the State Transportation Commission, S T.C. So, uh, the S T.C. recently released the 2023 Transportation Performance Report. Uh, there, there's a, there's a website, um, and, and folks, take your time, go to this website, check this information out. It's a report, uh, they want feedback and comments. Uh, it's opened up in March 1st, uh, it goes, it runs till April 30th, and you'll be able to get some feedback on local roads and, uh, give your comment about how the state's doing with their roads. Uh, that, uh, website is TalkPatransportation.com. So, that's TalkPatransportation.com. And there's also gonna be, once you go to that website, there's also going to be, uh, they're going to have a Zoom meeting. Uh, so, folks from the public will be able to, uh, enter the Zoom meeting and be able to see what's going on, uh, and, and I do believe that you may be able to make comments, but this report, we're gonna be able to give feedback, and I think it's very important. And so, we go to TalkPatransportation.com, get the form, look it over the report, give some feedback, and hopefully that you can take, participate in, in their Zoom meeting as well. And so, if you go to TalkPatransportation.com, you'll have all that information. Please go out there, we need, we need, uh, Uniontown and everyone in the surrounding, the listening areas of W N B S, to go to TalkPatransportation.com, so they can go ahead and get all this information. Uh, I'd just like to say, it was a good meeting, thank you. Uh, thank you again to, uh, North and South Union Townships or Supervisors for, uh, opening up that avenue so we can work together, and also for the future here. I think that's gonna be a lot of, a lot of, uh, new things and new directions that we can set up, working with the, uh, our neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Um, any other public comment this evening? Any other public comment this evening? If not, that's all I have.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown. The council adjourned to meet Thursday, April 6, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you.